City Council meeting, August the, we're public, we're public hearing first as required by law. And vice versa, like, also. Uh, there are public hearing records of right now for Adams Grand pump station fee ordinance. I guess tonight, eight, nine, ten, four, four, seven, P M. So good evening, before we get our regular scheduled council meeting tonight, we will first hold a public hearing of the Adams Grand pump station fee ordinance. This public hearing is an opportunity for city council to hear from the public any comments of the proposed ordinance that will establish an annual compensation fee on the patent parcels of the Adams Grand subdivision along Ashmore Green Road, the Range Road. It will be initially settled at a hundred and twenty-two dollars per year, assessed annually on the proper tax bill. Notice of this public hearing was published in a newspaper of general circulation, our community as required by law. The ordinance being considered tonight at second meeting will establish annual pump station fee for this subdivision to be assessed on these portions for the upcoming tax year. This time, I would like to recognize anyone with us tonight, or anyone wishing to make a comment in this public hearing, step forward to be recognized. When I see someone step forward, I will rejoice. Rise and honor the leader. Fair enough. I can no one, he'll sign that the ordinance stepped forward or has weighed ahead all line. Uh, if you can close the public hearing. I can provide an opportunity for all those present and online to be heard and seeing their others. Along with, I will close this public hearing for the Adams Grand pump station fee ordinance. Are closed. Our regular schedule, the city council meeting of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, approximately seven, oh, four, P M. Like the records reflected on members of council with the exception of councilman Reynolds, who's present in the little chamber, along with our city administrator, Mr. Duncan, our senior vice minister Miller, which can power the heads in the audience, along with our city attorney, we welcome. Welcome. Thank you. So tonight, uh. That's it. Some of our, all guests are citizens as well as our paper president, uh. Thank you for giving your, uh, all day, cultural council board. I said that I spoke an outstanding leader. Sheriff, thank you for being here. Appreciate that. Uh, hello, I'm business officer. Thank you for being here, listening outside. Uh, first, I feel the welcome, which I wish, right? Our invitation, prayers and legions will be, uh, this month, uh, also known and kept. Now, welcome to further bond and help the council, please. Your name, address, and any other exciting news about you, or who you think has. Well, I hope this talks about more than my, 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 what, so.
So yes, as we were sharing, we have a happy, we're control. I just wanted to share the whole of it. So again, it's just to bring. I would support. But some of you might not be aware, which will actually, this. So they're too major to put awareness to our existence. And the goal for the council is to just. The issue. So. So there's five, one, two, three, four, five, six. Counsel. Okay, um. How big is the cast? So.
Outside of the cultural center, so I've spooked. When you said let's go beyond the wells, you mentioned parks. Um, you ever get lots of ideas on what you're looking to do?
Certainly, so, especially with the trail.
Why does he talk about preserving, uh, that? To talk about this as a young school, we don't do that. Probably talking about it in the cultural center. Yeah, and, oh, I went to the scene, personally, I believe it was on. Such a small, small thing, such a. So far, it was standard there was. Personally, I think this is, this is. What they did, I don't know what they did, but the production of it was first. Appreciate that very much, I'm like, they're doing there, for, so, it's council, so thank you. All the questions, all that is.
General would appreciate those of us who've been around the flagpole a few times, that we have, um, witnesses and people that we know that are still here. Uh, and still here, should we back up with them and, uh, met with them? Those wonderful days that would, uh, join her efforts and, uh, observing the stream and, uh, we see the arts of the, uh, city model. And I've shared about the red book, and we both will be passionate about what we read on there, and all some things. She's very modest tonight, she wouldn't tell me that she is the daughter of significant, which was a little business environment. Happens to have a worldwide presence. Well, we thank her for moving in the city model, for choosing to be in the city model. Maybe in the city both. So, well, we appreciate her efforts today. Very nice. Except continuing the history of, uh, chamber of commerce.
So just to that. We enjoyed the, for the mission of how it's going to show. How many, just a couple of things. It's kind of fix July this week, of Chamber of Commerce. Will that. September.
That is our city council meeting, uh, July the fifth, twenty twenty-four. You have those members in your packet on the weekend if they once had a chance to heal them. Those, uh, culture corrections, clarifications. And my spouses pleasures, make sure they will submit it. Question for progress, maybe is there a second? It's probably say aye, aye, aye. It's probably like saying, you know, so, even July, we don't have so many. Also, special count, uh, city council meeting of August the fifth, twenty twenty-four. Also, it's been in your packet, uh, council's project. The city of plenty of energy. Actually, it's many, it's your second, thank you, frankly, Mr. Matty. Clarifications. Say aye, as opposed by side. Sign this public comment, uh, items on the agenda, got the, we have anyone, there'll be another public comment, we're gonna. The political administrator, Mr. Ducking.
Sure. Okay, so a few other things for everyone tonight, to, to stick with the, the cultural center thing. Um, and, uh, as you know, when they opened, uh, that, uh, Peter company kicked off its twenty-fourth, twenty-five. See, of course, running last Thursday night, this long running Broadway hit is a building complex, usually of song and dance, and. Going of thinking wrong. Also features a tour, the chairs, and seventeen piece orchestra. Tickets are still available for shows that are running this week, Thursday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday. As long as they're up there, of course, like, this week, on Thursday, Thursday, Sunday, uh, being September first. What's exciting thing coming to the cultural center is Sui barbecue. That's right, it's barbecue time. Uh, so is that time you're getting the Sui barbecue cook-off at the modern cultural center? Ready to pick up because one and twenty, like, over the southeast, uh, from over the southeast, competing to bring the best barbecue to Mount. The festival opens Friday with their anything but competition, where participating cookers will serve anything but their barbecue. For each of their taste buds, sliders, well, chicken, smoked cowboy, desserts. Only way to find out what's cooking, so. Opened on Saturday, and of course, there's our, the barbecue cook-off competition, with a panel of certified barbecue tasters. Well, that's not certified ones too. Uh, instead of counter barbecue association, the public will also have a chance to pass their vote for their best barbecue. Whether the people post awards. Hear the fly music, and they find this campus festival is a perfect. For those who, uh, come on, so, to the first night, we go out with a bang. So, uh, to the weather that we have for our display, I think, the, 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 where it's been scheduled to Friday night of the barbecue festival. And we also really appreciate you making me, uh, definitely there's, for sponsorship for them. Uh, any more information about Sui, check out modern center dot. Uh, a couple of updates on what we're doing, first, basis, um, construction, or something, it's going on the three or five North Main Street. So the state contractor for environmental testing and mediation. Sound exorbitant, uh, speeding is going on with the poor things for, uh, so they can dig some, some soil samples and some wells. That's into some monitoring and things like that. So if you see that I fully out there, that's what's going on. Also, I just want to thank the community over, uh, near Ashmore Bridge Road, where the water was open just the other week. Uh, we had a lot of traffic, um, congestion, we've also been accepting of law enforcement presence and working with water burger to help mitigate that traffic. So we just thank everyone for their patience with us. So it's actually a very good, uh, opportunity to hear from the public what their concerns are, we'll be able to adjust and modify. And so while we're still out there supporting the traffic needs out there for the, that will be in the, in the very future. What's been the earliest, market calendar from, uh, the first, which is going to be another, uh, swamp products. You've got some great effects, we're partnering with the Chamber, uh, the modest voice, uh, to, uh, break, uh, building. So we'll get all the more information on, as I said, there's, there's details, but it's gonna be other things, other than that. Uh, okay, sir.
Uh, most of all, uh. Uh, I'm trying to make up for it, please, now, council, that the, uh, September committee meeting. Oh, Tuesday, September the third. Uh, later A P M, uh, Monday. Also, let the records reflect that Mr. Reynolds is joining us. Can this matter else? Next time, I'm, for our standard communities, economic brand development, Mr. Matty. We can send our, uh, continue our love for modern cultural center, I want everybody to know that modern cultural center will develop theater capital, was recently named in twenty twenty-four, best of the upstate communities, twice a year, right? Our community theaters, title is recognition and hard work, our cultural center staff, including our theater manager, Christopher Parker, and located volunteers, and any others who make our theater productions possible. Excite, this game.
Just want to give a quick shout out to the police department, buying their things in the state, and showing my, you know. It's, 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 uh, it's like, thanks to all.
It's still, uh. All right. Some policy, Mr. Wells. I can, this may or may not be important this time. Preparation was for all good. Uh, soccer cheer, so, uh. Swing, there are two day trips being planned at the senior center, and one for Friday, August thirty, two hundred percent bills, uh, with us, you know, another one. September twelfth to Siski, right on. So just because I need more things to do. I'm looking to appreciate, still, um. Now, actually, evolving officials training classes at the mountain sports center, Wednesday at six P M. Wow, I don't know whether it's too late to, to sign up. The gentleman who's running those names, Jim Peg, nice fellow, um, so appears anyone in the public who is interested, I know there's a short, Joe Fishes. That are offered for, for basketball and other sports, so if you're all interested, or there's someone who's interested, uh, can see me, or. And, uh, meet Jim on Wednesday night at six. So head up on the rest of the volunteers that were sitting in the stands this year. The officials, as they run up and down the court, to be sure that they're, they're trained. Okay, let's do. The thing I have proposed playing with any commission is not going to have a meaning. Next month, this month. And that makes any report. Next time, I'll put a, then finish this, ordinance is our second reading.
Ordinance for second reading tonight, and one is an ordinance to establish a pump station fee, parcels that are planted in one's place.
Simple policy, Mr. Wells. Can Mr. Matty like to make a mention that we. In the second reading, the almost going pump station. It's listed in your packet. Discussion. The, the motion to approve the notice to establish a pump station fee, of cautiousness, maybe back at Saratoga. And it, suppose like saying, we've done motion to, now this.
It's one ordinance for first reading, and this is an ordinance, so. Since I've been, it works to whip off.
And it's supposed to be Mr. Wells, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a mention that we, uh, ordinance to establish a licensing fee with triple private. This can say. Say. Sure, good. Discussion. Can Mr. Mayor, this had a couple of items that came in a committee of concern, where we were asking for legal to take a couple of items out, there's a finished truck in your packet. If there are any questions or comments, um, from, from since the committee discussed, or any which you have here now, maybe a technical time. Fine, thank you. Comments, questions, uh, for you first. The packet, the, it's, um, page twenty-seven. Issues and insertions. But just for, um, record, uh, they don't have taken a look at this. All right, I'm just thinking, this, we're asking, always telling us, they're only wanting to win everything, but they're asking the master name to cover for the person, is that correct? That is my understanding, that's correct, and that, that remains that way.
Yes, sir, that, that's, that's what's been told to us at this point, but we'll, but you're correct, although they're in touch, just build on one particular subdivision, which has private rights, so they still need the entryway of that subdivision. As private rights, they still need the entryway of that subdivision approval as well. Um, for, they have no other. Goals right even to extend beyond that ancient city, however, this master license would be a blanket agreement for essentially access to the city. They're, they're, they're intentions, they're only one, there is a, a element, um. In scope of a green. It says company will submit to the city a residential site in around thirty days prior to permit submission. For informational purposes only, company. That such submission may probably fail. Will be doing, maybe sort of like those middle east allows us to know where they put it there before they go there. We can all start um. Prior to, but this is a master license agreement, so we will not be able to. The tail of interdement. This is our fourth fiber company. There we have three that have citywide deployment. Here, which has a smaller from about forty percent of the city. Ripple which mostly in Simpsonville, I'm incorporating. Simpsonville is okay between this. Simpsonville, they're, they're right there along. Which is why there's one subdivision that. Total access to on their routing system. That they have their future uh municipal city. Or at least maybe two more that last.
So this agreement can allow them at any time decide that they want to start moving up. Part of the city. Right aways.
Allows it, it's a standard, I was agreeing that'll end up a, a kind of how that would work. But yes, when we step within the franchise agreement. Can spend up permits for additional.
Because we don't have. On what, when we use every fiber company has to come in and. That's what I'm.
That's, that's, that's what angels happening. And that's what's happening. That. Intimate, like private. Definitely. We must check what we're getting to, and what was the third? But what in T T stuff. Our city pretty much. Frontier. As pretty much East Butler and four seventeen. City into pie. So. They're down with Florida. They'll learn that they don't have votes from other places, right? Sure, I imagine, you know, T T are not sure, sir. So whereas eighteen, so basically most time you say. They should go out to the public with the fiber, so it's, it's order transitioning, which is what. My tier is doing the transition from the actual. Opera lines in the ground to fiber line. Real specialties over, but they've been in the area for. I'm saying full of twenty, bringing through that. Let's speak to her. There might be these few pockets that they don't, but. So the question now, we're, we're still working with legal counsel on is. How do we? Not so strict, but how do we work with providers when they're going into a city right away? I see right aways, but they're operating in the city. I would hold them to a certain level of standard to make sure that they're. Doing. Good work or. I don't think the right way. Make sure that. So it looks, are they the ground, this is nice as. Still working. So the, the reason for my question was. I had a wild bird up my yard. That train exists. But it's. T T to my knowledge hasn't dug up. Bible to my home. And D S L another. And so in terms of the actual fiber deployment. That was the only one that I know that reaches. So the question for me becomes a matter of. There's other options as well. You've got your T Mobile, Verizon, they now have the satellite versions. So there's all kinds of other different deployment mechanism. This is true fiber. It's true, wow. So it becomes a question of, when we talk about monopolies. What kind of wanted to find and define as well, there's obviously different various spectacles to the board or to find it as. People come over one private. And once it was more of a. Who's providing comments necessarily, whether they have. But that's what I was trying to get my, my editor, it was, there's different types of deployment when it comes to actual fiber. What it was, yeah, right, I was looking for fiber, fiber, fiber from, from phone to phone, it's.
Question. So this particular neighborhood that they're going into. I believe, honestly, there's still a new permission from that neighborhood, certainly beginning to. Right of entry. Those all of those words are apparently. So, so. Franchise agreement. Yeah, I guess I'm. Living close to the whole city. Actually, for you, something more. We're starting to get, even with a few of them, and there's, there's this installation that.
Question from you. There, there's more of a question for council. Would be a question, maybe as far as can they proceed with the negotiations with the private H O A? Or they have a franchise agreement. State roads, right way. In this case, it's just operating within the city. But there's no, so they only date rates to get the mental state rates to get to the subdivision, the subdivisions. Uh, utilities and right aways are privately held. But they will be operating within the city, which is with a franchise. Sure, they got that I worked in. It's not a right of way, you know, without. I don't know what, but I do know for the planet. Spur me. Was. For divorce subdivisions, I don't know what they're presenting. Let's get.
That, that statement, the neighborhood you're talking about is considered an internet desert. So right now, there is a major effort, but there is no. But should not have access to internet. It's lucky to step back to provide that with that particular. Western neighborhood world, so uh. Pray we kill for.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, which is touched on exactly what I was about to say was. You know, I think some of what we're, we're saying here is exactly to your point is installation fatigue. Your experience. Or probably that maybe some installation fatigue, because I mean, that's, that's true. This is. Um, as I look at this, this is one of those things where. You know. Mr. Man, we, we, owners and users. This is one of those changing technologies that. Maybe four years now from now, this is, I've grown so relevant, and it's all five G, I don't really know. But what I do know is there's neighborhoods that aren't being serviced that. In order for them to be serviced. They have to have a franchise agreement with us, that company has set a franchise agreement with us. Um, to do business within our city. So as I look at this, it's. Kind of sprinkle line, but also, so I, I get the fatigue part of it, but. Um, but it's an opportunity that there's, it doesn't necessarily there, but. That's all right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
And Chad, it's considered the telecommunication. For it to the definition on the section put eight there into. I would say they're just applying to ask for a franchisee. Franchise agreement, Josephine touches to it. But what's that's done, the ability is. With the state for them to receive the work in the right way. That's this particular home development here is a private development. As their own H O A. Streets are not needed to the city. Uh, I would suspect they now have to go to the H O A to get permission. And their right of ways. They're seeing a thing with. Back on B O P right of ways. Even though they're hitting and daughter eyes, paper heads, and things like that. But in the right of way. Now, Matt can have the right to do. It's not even easy to say. Don't put your striker system out to the edge of the road, because there's a right of way there. Uh, we've got here various destruction companies. Problem was, I was in the desert, I'd be in peace, stopped at the. Out of the hill. But that the hill to Farnhill and Paxton. Only choice was a company. Overhead lines that. Increase mobility with your advice. But I didn't have the choice. So Raul came in.
The question, so if. There are mechanisms in the city. In peace and health. That's been certain council's discretion. That right of way, we have the right to say no. This agreement. Is the city's effort to control. Those highways are obsessed by these franchises. So it protects the city's right of way. Um, and allows us to govern how those are. You spot others. That is, that is correct. They're subject to a number of requirements, disagreement. That protects the city and. Has been swift, slip that by these right of ways. Yeah. Back to the point, there's, there's a certain point with the concentration. So they decided this especially. Or. It's forgiven. Stop them if somebody had two burns. So what these agreements, they, they submit. Less permits to come into our right of way, so we. Our minutes are given in a certain area, so this particular agreement only deals with a certain subdivision. We have another franchise, they go with another. A chassis company, they want to come give in for a right of way. These particular roads, they do that later. That's still, you have a right based on a permitting. To determine if it's going to be the city's best interest. To refer to your point, there could be a time, but we've got over saturation of right of ways. You just got to clear out space to. So I can see in the future that if you've got. Power, electricity. Super different telecommunications than right rooms before, we just don't have capacity on right way. But just like you told, a lot of poles. They have a certain not capacity on pole. Can't handle. So future routings will govern by limitations, go past, you know, right as well. I just thought whatever documents. If I wanted to open store with something. Spectrum is there, is the only one. Don't know where eighteen people have been up to. So I don't know if it's feasible for them to serve them, but theoretically. So right now, most of our franchise agreements. Um, there are. All the suppliers who feel directly run my example. But we want. So what we're ultimately talking about was in. I was, yes, so that, that's also. He doesn't provide to go in. From the ground level. And we're going by our A T T spectrum and maybe. Going that anyway. Seems to be provider for a long time, like mostly company that they're switching over. That's how we found out we didn't have a franchise agreement, so that becomes. Simplest and the first components are like, well, what's the franchise agreement? So we're working at it, and we'll not take care, but. Yeah, it's, it's as else to, uh. It's just news. It's a separate, how they operate in the city. In this particular instance, they don't. Says from us. Or I didn't need permission. Motion gives the general guidelines. How they operate throughout the city. As for coaching, like there could be some areas that are over saturated. Going the right of way and what may. Fail our. Really good encouragement programs due to. But we're even bringing into that when we're trying to build out the bushes for stormwater, we're hitting you building. And so I said, shouldn't be there because they shouldn't refresh upon the storm. Storm grain. So. These, these areas are getting congested and it will. So. I'm just questioning, I think, down there. There's, there's this thing of the franchise agreement.
Authorize, ignore excuses, best to license, we go for the fiber network. The only thing we have. Where if council takes us an action is. It's on page twenty seven where. This, it requires additional sites and routes. At least thirty days prior to. From their submission for information purposes only. Excellent permission. That's our, that's why we're going in there today. That's the way I. Was going to be an ask for is to improve the notice. With franchise agreement. First read. I version type of, uh, the version to approve for notice establishment, franchise agreement authorized, non-exclusives. That's the license we look for fiber network to ripple fiber. Treating. Suppose like sign. Ways. Just come back.
Make a motion to approve the resolution and nothing the updated policy. Policy manual. Second. Discussion. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also filing this Mister. We have a lot of time, work, effort and energy in this, and I appreciate also counsel giving us a feedback for some of the. Concerns that. Now, even though the new staff on that you can address in there, so all of those are. The chance to read lots of red, lots of changes. Been documented to protect local citizens as well, I'm sorry, our employees as well as the city. So I have Mr. Mayor, thank you.
This is a resolution. There's some type of motion to approve the resolution about what they. Policy manual. Suppose like sign.
It was a resolution to operate as the offer of twenty twenty.
This policy, Mr. Lo. I think this is a, this is a resolution for which purchases included in this purchase are. Six patrol cars, sanitation, bathroom, frogs, side loader, trash truck, pickup trucks, sewer bed. Swer camera. Scramble these all items that were in the twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty five budget. She's just the. Lowest, the best. Response and lowest better was for citizens. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the F R I twenty twenty five. Citizens. Session. Motion to approve the resolution authorizing. Purchases. To the twenty four. This is like saying.
It's a resolution to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public facilities corporation, so I'd like to make a motion to reappoint. Following in the performance to the board of directors, Mr. Daniel Basely, Mr. Rodney. This is for.
Scroll over, I have a motion to second. Bobby will just clean, so I. I was just trying to be louder because I got a talk from our online. Who said that they can't do this too well, so I just wanted to make sure. Also got a tag show right, former council process says the audio was not left. You can try again and it was still wrong, so he said, good night. Actually, the other house on Hill was wrecking that I couldn't speak. Which of course is the reappoint the slave campus for modern public facility. Unfortunately, Mr. Rodney and Mr. Christina were just. Discussion. You know, almost in place of motion, say, all right, all right. Expose like sign.
It's a resolution for sale of surplus.
That the recognition for operating itself. Motion, Mr. Gray, is your second. That's a very good motion to approve a resolution. I was in the cell of other data's equipment by public options. Those opposed like sign. In the Russian cage, you know.
Purchase of trailers from make. So I would like to be wishing to. Session.
Supposed like sign.
Outstanding committee. City services.
We're part of the supposed meeting chair, Mr. Look, including Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, by kind of commission that we. Affirm is the. Services of the end. To service and city's financial advisor. Beautiful. We're discussion. Right, thinking this. There in there. Uh, Mr. Duncan, as we kind of talked about, what this. The, the, what we need in this for the city moving forward. Going through so many dangers with the city, the projects that we're looking for. Kind of give something away along why it's a good idea to bring on first trial and. I want advisors as we, as we move forward. Sir, thank you, sir. So first of all, uh, yeah, so we are looking to. Projects and they're coming to multiple years. And both friends, uh, we're trying to look at. Making sure that we had a financial advisor. And from that, I think capacity to meet the needs of the city as the city's. Or need for different money insurance worries as well. Also, uh, what's a different way that our previous FA was also returned. So, uh, that kind of installation worked out. Uh, going that the medals for retirement letter, we also did recommend first try on as well, so. I believe with R F P, I see an R F Q process, see three responses and interview two. It was a decision on myself and this director to put forward first try on advisors. The key things about those from that I think is interesting is now we need to have the capability. To, to do everything that we are looking for and more, uh, they are very well known to those. Um, and so they're, they have a great reputation and good standing history in the state. I seen in the state and I work with a lot of folks here locally that we work with as well. Including our bar council and. And what, uh, particularly, I, I. Appreciate about their agreement is that should we find that we are in a different direction in the future, we're not. It's just a month and month essentially. There we're able to be more flexible, but I may. I believe that we will, um, enjoy their services and be able to, to achieve goals that we're looking to achieve. Provide a. Chipping for us, uh, when it comes to accessing different financial markets for our brains. Because I look at something like this pretending like we're experts in other things is, is dangerous for our taxpayers' dollars, so. We're better than this and this we're living is a smart decision. Analyzing this, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I just wanted to add that, uh, I tell the, uh, kind of work with first trying professionally. With the number of my clients, uh, they're feeling extremely impressed over the years of the career. And stewardship and what they have with their client's trust. That they made that they were going to. Bring the R F Q, but I can't recommend it. The person playing with the motion of loss is the administrator. Getting first by advisors to serve the vaccine, this financial advisor, and so I. Suppose like sign. Agendas as committee of the home, so I would ask council to consider. Uh, via the informal method. Much valuable agenda, bring the cannabis groups. From resource officer agreement. Motion to this. Your second. I don't before, so. S R agreement, uh, of the food industry.
But yes, so, so this is our annual S R. We see it last week, uh, from the school district, they did have a few modifications to it. Uh, which we had discussed with them. Those items said. Section. And then also, uh, the general conventions, uh, they are asking that. Um, they'll be renewed at the end of each school year unless it's sixty days prior to renewal date. When party notifies the other, which is a change from just doing a school year. Now, we also have had positive conversations with school district staff. With regards to the fee. We're going to be talking with them later this, uh, in order to make sure that you're still at that fifty fifty mark, which we have found below that. And in the last year, um, and so we appreciate them and their willingness to take a look at that, and so we. anticipate the fee going forward to, to increase to a proportional share. Uh, that is equitable to both parties, uh, whereas we're, we're settled below. I don't have a perfect percentage, but I know we're below fifty percent. You know, we think that will probably be. Ten thousand dollars per S R O for their, uh, next year, and so that's what we're going to be working with them on. So, but it's our standard agreement with those two changes.
Topics discussion. Years. Our job, so we have to start the program this calendar. Be sixty five days ahead of time, uh. Continue that discussion because the past few years they will. That discussion should be, uh, with us before they go into the budget process for the next year. And. You buy them, it's, it's too late. Where I will put that on my talent. Who else? And Mayor, as part of that discussion, I would also urge. What we request in, uh, I mean, for additional S R O at one of our schools with a large population. Um, I think it has surpassed, long surpassed the need for an additional officer there. Um, we actually funded it one year. When, when the budget and we're questioned by the school district to pull back, because no other schools in the district had that number of. School resource officer. But I think where we are in this time of closely need. To, to push for that, so when you have the discussions with the school district about additional funding for an officer. That we also look at an additional officer, so are we looking at that particular school, because right now we've got two at the, the school. And middle school. Yes, I am, I am thinking of one, um. The school district. Agreement is specified. Or in today's school year. Just wanted to be sure that you know exactly when you. Starts. Okay, as a member to motion. Discussion on the member. Supposedly, uh, women who are going to, uh, the, 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 to, uh, modification of terms to specify. Uh, maybe in waiting school year. Motion is. And we're back in the original motion, as a member, is any discussion about. Here now, obviously, table of the motion to approve it on the pre-pro school resource officer. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. As a member subject to, uh. Adding the terms of specific starting and basis when you say. Suppose like sign. That the motion. Accepted as a member. That all right? Next item is public comment. This is the public comment. For many of our citizens, this is all from anything that we did at senior model. Uh, once I'm signed on, Mr. Duck. You will come forward, state your name and address. That's what you can tell us. Big Mac child, teach that north main street by a corner, all distinctive details. Uh, I've been here a couple of months ago asking for some help, and I'm back here again, I need some help. So locked at the city arrows and blowing dirt all over our business, uh. Detailing cars, it's pretty. Tough with dirt flying in the air, you can imagine being in your office typing, it's a little wet sanding, but. Got a while, you're best everywhere, I think we're having to deal with, uh, but. I will say, talking, we're doing contact with. I always said talking with doing contact with the long branch company that's been utilizing the property. But those have been done. Um uh certainly be glad to meet with anybody over there. And I've got some ideas that would follow them. They got different lanes. Right now, there's a giant under dirt shaped like a ramp. And the wind just pushing it up in the air. Uh it only takes two to three months for a part of the COVID and dirt. Today, we're lucky to go in the other direction. We're just asking, please, please, y'all, if you don't get a lot of rest, leave something. I think it's tough. I know it'd be telling cars out the weather where we deal with the gosh and dirt. Is this possible? Let's push out and try and bring up something you have where we spray. Green stuff or. We're in the target part that we're gonna keep the dirt along. That's a night about you're there when I don't be driving, where we have all that dirt where the airplanes are going. And they keep the giant now dirt there for months. I was just off. And over there, I'm the tar if you don't want to pick up them. You got that stuff that I want you to encapsulate is a guy sprayed. For uh anything that would help us. I would very appreciate that with that um. And also some of you members that have been here uh. The city center, dealing with the city center. I've always been on board with it. Before I was creating that. It was great location. I would have wanted to move. So, you know. I just go with really going forward a lot faster than it is now. So I started looking. Surely nine locations that are back great. I do find one. And Diane Barrett was the owner of that property. And she was so patient with me. And she didn't agree to that. And I saw like on her show, I could not go. So. I did rent, rent a rental. And now we sold these in the property town. So she would not sell just so there's no burden on her and her family. It's been five years and she's ready to sell. I don't blame her. I just don't know when they're not right. She sells. There's actually nowhere that I. That I'm willing to go to. And I know that right now the city center might not be full blast over here. Uh once that's gone, guys, I'm not going. I mean, I've got a good ten years left in me. I got a nephew who's like my son. Get married, everything made my life happen because we don't have kids. He's been with us since high school. So he's been there for over ten years and he can run it. I know, but I'm just trying to be honest. I've been very. Proud of about the city center. I've been, you know, willing. So. I think there's a lot of sacrifice for someone to back in business. Even though one thing's hard enough, but. You think that we're a cattle. Yeah, I thought this. Great location. I'm never gonna find one better. So I just want to cancel the matter. Keep talking on that. And like I said, I don't mind saying that. I know that's not part of the plan. So that might be something that we wanted to meet sometime and discuss some areas. Because I don't mind her if she sells tomorrow. It's been. She's been. She's been way too patient with me. So I was, I don't know that. Oh, please, if you ever have with that, I know you tried. I know. I know. I just don't think that they're really. They're not doing very well. Maybe it's people that don't know about that. Make sure you're utilizing it. But like I said, if y'all go over there, it's a ramp of dirt. It's just. Yumps right up in the air. So there's some few things I want to let pass you know about. Where I stand on that property and. Like I said, in the future, if that's going to be part of the city center, maybe we need to do something. That's what you got. I thank you. Of course, it's a uh for the second session. I can work in session considering economic development matter related bridge rail station under section thirty nine four dash seventy eighteen. Which is a second. Session. Thousands of favors. Next session, say, I know. It's like saying uh we will. You can bring upstairs. Second session. Uh. Those that were here tonight, we appreciate.
... Also, we're actually allowed to discuss in session. Don't see any board area. I'll skip further learning with council concerns just to keep note that you guys. See, yeah, I was quoting you this morning, building a better brother. Jason is no longer a project engineer. She has been promoted to director of the low country. Over over us and that is really not our promotion in this part of these. We appreciate the change that she did. Assistant Mertesacker, building better brother. We had a last meeting in December of twenty twenty. It is now moved back to April twenty twenty five. This is one is are you totally locates? There are ninety three tracks for right away acquisitions. That was so.
Just a reminder about projects one twenty seventeen seventeen was a condition they give them. So we either like. Anything else came up? That's why it was extended an invitation to visit and tour senior building. Or in the future, those in that that. Please to get the invitation. I wanted to be necessary. Also, when we know what so. That being said. You have the council process. And then most councils pleasure on the German. Having the United States move so those favor in Germany say I don't understand the German. Go forward. Also.